Councilor Pratt.
Brother.
Councilor Mahoney.
Brother.
Councilor Jack.
Here.
Councilor Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Richard.
Oh, here.
Mayor Malphite Joe isn't able to join us this evening.
He's under the weather and he sent his regrets. Tonight, the prayer and pledge is by myself. We're doing it all. Dear God and Father, I ask as we go forward doing the business of the people of the city of Clarksville, that you will lead and you will guide us and that you will help us make our work align with your business. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a presentation, a proclamation for the Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Want you to come over here and join me, Bill?
All right.
How are you today?
I'm good.
Good, so I'm gonna read the proclamation here.
Very good.
Okay, great. So whereas Alzheimer's disease is a degenerative, excuse me, brain disease and the most common cause of dementia, and whereas nearly seven million Americans are currently living with Alzheimer's, more specifically about 38,100 West Virginians aged 65 and over are currently living with Alzheimer's, including 1,400 in Harrison County, and whereas everyone in this meeting, experts have identified common or insufferable Alzheimer's disease, including memory loss, confusion about time and place, struggling to complete familiar tasks, trouble finding appropriate orders, difficulties in judging situations, and changes in mood and personality, and whereas there is no cure for Alzheimer's, but there are treatments that may change disease progression and drug and non-drug options that may help treat symptoms. Understanding available options can help individuals living with disease and their caregivers to cope with symptoms and improve quality of life, and whereas there is an urgent need to raise awareness and understanding about Alzheimer's disease and all other dementia, and whereas the Alzheimer's Association, West Virginia Chapter, is committed to support services, education, advocacy, and research on behalf of those living with Alzheimer's and other dementia and their caregivers, and whereas the North Central Walk to End Alzheimer's will be held in Meadowbrook Mall on October 5th, 2025. And now therefore, I will hymen on behalf of the Audible Mayor of Clarksville, Jim Malphite Joe, at the City of Clarksville, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
I want to thank the city council for doing this and the mayor. Thank you all so much. You know, that number in here about how many West Virginians are suffering, actually, there's a new number out that about 19,000, over 19,000, almost 20,000 suffering or have been diagnosed with dementia at the age of 45 plus. So at this point, Alzheimer's now with the research and we're able to diagnose, so we're finding it even drops lower. And I say to you all, wear your purple this month if you would. Explain to people why you are and thank you so much. And join us in Meadowbrook Mall, October 5th. One o'clock, we gather, two o'clock, we have the opening ceremony, and we'd love for you to come down. You don't have to raise money, just come and join us because it's a great event and it supports the Alzheimer's research. Thank you all very much, appreciate it. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, and also this evening, we have a presentation from Mr. Patty Saunders, the Executive Director of Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center.
Thank you. I brought some items for you that I want to hand out. Some pens. We'll start this way.
Thank you.
Our business cards, our brochure, and our statistics from the last fiscal year. Thank you, Trevor. Good job.
All right. Thank you guys for having me today. Thank you, city manager, council, wish the mayor was here, and others. Today, I'm here to just educate and make awareness of what Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center does and has done for the last 20 years. Previously, we were known as Harrison County Child Advocacy Center. In 2022, we changed to Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center because we cover four counties, Harrison, Dodridge, Taylor, and Barber. The name encompasses, name covers our staff because they are heroes. The children that walk through our doors are heroes. The protecting caregivers are heroes. And especially our teams that work these cases every day are heroes. What many do not know about Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center is they started the pathway for child advocacy centers in the state of West Virginia and also law. In the late 80s, many people came together, many professionals came together, some of them like Terry Walker from our CPS, Catherine Munster, which was a local GAL, Guardian Alitem, formed a committee and saw that there was a lack of services for juveniles. They also saw that there was a lack of prosecution with these cases and a lack of follow-through. They created the first multidisciplinary investigation team in the state of West Virginia, which is now law. And they were part of bringing that in law. Many people do not know that. They also were part of bringing status reviews in law. So prior to a status review, there was no follow-through with abuse and neglect cases. There was no follow-through with juvenile delinquency cases. And there was a time that the old Judge McCarthy asked a CPS worker, "How many kids do you have on your caseload?" And they couldn't answer him. So he went to the clerk's office and all the files were in boxes. And he started one by one doing status reviews. And now status reviews are in law to happen every three months for those cases. So that is something that Harrison County can be very proud of, that that started here and we've really made the world change for children. So child advocacy centers were developed to be part of investigation, treatment, and prosecution for abuse cases. They were designed to help create a child-friendly setting and to make cases more court-defendable. We have many roles in our system. And so we, one is our multidisciplinary investigation team. We meet monthly in all four of our counties and we go over every case that comes through our center. And those cases stay on our list until they are sentenced or completed. So they can be on our list for years. The prosecutors lead those meetings. We facilitate them, but they lead over decisions from those meetings. Those meetings are to make recommendations to the prosecutors of how we could foresee like plea deals or criminal outcomes. They also are for the teams to work together. And it really, Harrison County is our strongest multidisciplinary investigation team. Many of the officers, child protective services, prosecutors, and other service providers really brainstorm these cases and come up with the best solutions for these children. Our forensic interviews are another part of the cases. And I'm going to go into that further here, our services, but our accreditation. So I'm proud to say we have just been re-accredited nationally, which is huge. You have to be re-accredited every five years. You have to complete 63 items perfectly or you do not become recreated. Recreate, I can't talk today, I'm sorry. We had the best we've ever had. We marked all 63 plus more. The creditors were very impressed. It was the fastest we've ever had because they have received everything. But that's because of my staff. That's because of the law enforcement in Harrison County. That's because of the prosecutors, CPS, and other advocates. We would not get national accreditation without them. So I just want to put a little plug in. We are celebrating 20 years this year, which is huge because there's not many CACs in the nation that are celebrating 20 years yet. So August 7th, we are having our celebration with the Chamber of, the Chamber and Northwestern Mutual across the street. So please, everyone, come. So I want to go into the interviews. Before Child Advocacy Center, law enforcement would do interviews at the station or in the field. Child Protective Services would do other interviews at their office or in the field. A lot of times, schools would be doing interviews. So children could have multiple interviews. It increased the trauma for children and it decreased prosecution. But because just like an adult, if you see a car accident, your memory changes. You remember something else or something changes in your memory and it affects if people believe you or not. Disclosure is a process, so more information is natural to come, but it's also hard to prove in a criminal jury if you have multiple disclosures. I always like to share the story about Susie to share why it's important to have one interview and to have it done at a child-friendly setting. Susie is a true story that happened in the United States. She went to school and told her teacher that her body part hurt and that her stepdad was touching her there. The teacher went and got the school nurse who interviewed her. The teacher interviewed her. Who went and got the school counselor who interviewed her. Who went and got the vice principal who interviewed her. And went and got the principal who interviewed her. All before law enforcement CPS was called. They called CPS and law enforcement. The detective was on scene and CPS worker was also on scene somewhere else. So a patrol officer came who interviewed her. The detective came and interviewed her. And the CPS worker came and interviewed her. Eight interviews before she's even went to the Child Advocacy Center. She went to the Child Advocacy Center where she did not disclose. There's many types of offenders. There's those that holler, "I'm not guilty." There's those that stay quiet. And there's those that play the victim. This offender stayed quiet. They had to send Susie home with her mother, who was murdered that night. I have seen cases very similar to this. So that's why it's important to reduce the amount of interviews and it's important to have it child-friendly and to do a one interview. So now with Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center, they come to our center. We work as a team basis. It is just not our staff. When we have a forensic interview, a protecting caregiver brings that child. The law enforcement that's investigating that case is present during our interview, watching it live, as well as the CPS worker. A lot of times, our prosecutors are also there watching it. And if the child already has a guardian alitem, they are there watching the interview. They are part of the interview. So our interviewer, yes, interviews the child alone, but they do take breaks and they do ask the team members, "Are we missing something?" A lot of times, a child may say a name that we have no idea, but the investigators know, and say, "Please go further into that or go further into this place." So we're able to do a one-time interview. There are times that we have to do more interviews. There's times that we've interviewed three, four, or five-year-olds. One, they can't sit there for hours for the interview. So we will do what's called expanded and extended interview. The child comes to our center and we do rapport with the child. They come back to our center, we do rapport and transition, which is looking at the family. And then the third time, they come back and we do rapport, transition, and explore. That way, they're comfortable with us and they know when they leave our office, they're going home. Those interviews have worked greatly with younger children and with those children that have had severe trauma. This is sort of just an image of what it was like before CACs and what it's like now. So I want to welcome you to Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center. When you enter our office, which is right across the street, you will come to a secure door that you have to ring in. The reason we have it secure is we want our children to feel safe. The alleged offenders are not allowed on our property or in our center. It's our protocol as well as national protocol. So we want the kids to feel that when they're in there, they know they're safe. Our children are always greeted with a family advocate and they're greeted by name. And then they ask the child to give the child control. So tell me who came with you today. And it gives the child immediate control of that situation. And also, there has been times where the alleged offender has tried to come in and this prevents that at the door. So we know exactly who's with them. The family's taken into our intake room. And we have two intake rooms, which you'll see here in a minute, with the family advocate. The forensic interviewer will go in the intake room and will meet the child. And if there's multiple children, they take one child at a time back to the forensic interview room. This hallway starts the rapport for that forensic interview with the child. It starts their relationship to start telling us their story. This is our forensic interview room. It is recorded throughout the interview. Our interviews are able to be used for abuse and neglect civil court hearings. However, with the state law, the accused has the right to face the QZ. So our child still has to testify in jury trials, but our interviews have been used in some of the jury trials. Through this, we do a national accredited protocol called Child First. It is a semi-structure protocol that has four steps of rapport, transition, explore, and closure. The reason it is semi-structure is the child is in control of that interview. So if the child comes in and immediately wants to go and explore and disclose, we immediately let the child go into explore or disclose. Our interviews are also poly-victimization. So just because they are referred for drug endangerment or they're referred for sexual abuse, we're still looking at all types of abuse. We're looking for neglect, physical abuse, witness to violence, sexual abuse, solicitation and trafficking. And yes, we have had true trafficking interviews. While the interviews are going on, our family advocates are meeting with the protecting caregiver and establishing those relationships. They are, of course, getting demographic information. They're getting information on what the protecting caregiver knows about the situation and if they have other information that our investigators don't have. They also are starting up services. So Child Advocacy Center is about healing and making our children survivors. And part of that is our services. The first is our medical. We partner with WU Children's Advocacy Clinic, which is Dr. Gavel and Meredith Pheasants. That clinic does appointments to make sure first, the child is okay. That's our first goal, is the child is okay. The second is for investigation. Those center, the clinic is used for physical abuse, for maltreatment, for malnourishment, and also for SAIN exams. For emergency SAIN exams, we send them to the ER at Ruby, where that team has already been called. They already know our children and protecting caregivers are coming and they're set for our children's services. The second service is our mental health. These type of cases cannot be sent to anyone. Scientific, scientific research has proven that trauma-focused cognitive behavior therapy works the best with children through trauma. It reduces the trauma. It reduces future drug use of these children of trauma. It reduces future criminal behaviors of trauma. And it reduces future health issue, even as to asthma. So we currently have a contract with Hamner Psychological that provides services to our children. And we're looking at growing and putting a trauma-focused cognitive behavior therapist on staff in the future. They also set up Crime Victim Compensation Fund, which has really grown. It used to be just for criminal cases that were prosecuted. And then they moved to cases that had police reports, even if they were not prosecuted. And now it's just for abuse. It's also including abuse and neglect cases. So our family advocates fill those out. For those children that have been sexually abused, it is important that they fill out those forms because if they're 34 and something happens to them, that they have a traumatic incident that has caused from their childhood trauma, Crime Victim Compensation will pay for therapy then. So we do help fill out those forms. Miley Legal has been gracious to notarize those for us and we mail them out for our clients and we're able to keep track of those. Our family advocates also are with them throughout the case, as we will talk about here soon. That is our other intake room. Some, it's bigger than the other one. We have had a family with 10 children, so we need a bigger room for them. This goes more onto the advocate. I've talked about several of those things. But other things they do is court accompaniment. As many of you know, a jury trial does not last one day. It's multiple days. Our family advocate will sit with the protecting caregiver and the child throughout that jury trial. They also are able to go in the courtroom with the child because they are normally not subpoenaed where the family is normally subpoenaed. So they are that friendly face, the constant person of comfort for that child. They also, if the child wants to go to sentencing, they will go to sentencing with the child and they will help prepare victim impact statements for them or with them, not for them. They are the bridge that forms our team with the family. They're the ones that's on the phone with the clients day in and day out. Law enforcement is busy. You guys know that. CPS is busy. It's hard for them to take time for phone calls. So that way, our family advocates get all the questions and we have them at multidisciplinary investigation team meetings. This mother wants to know A, B, C, and D, and we're able to get answers for them. They're also able to give the team updates. If new people are in the home, if things have changed, if something's going on with the children, they're able to give those updates. But they also make referrals to Costa, Stars and Strides, Hope, and many more. But they also make referrals to Costa, Stars and Strides, Hope, and many more. We started two years ago, a clothing and hygiene closet. I conducted an interview where a child was removed from the home the night before and he was focused on not having a toothbrush. He could not focus on the interview at all. So we made that never be an option or an issue again. We have toothbrushes, we have toothpaste, we have body wash, all the hygiene products they may need. And we also have clothes. There are times that kids come to our center straight from the scene of the crime. We've had kids come straight from murder scenes, sexual abuse scenes, and from the hospital from SAIN exams. And this way, we do have change of clothes from babies to adult sizes, shoes, and everything they will need. I never realized how important that closet was until we started it. And we go through that a lot. A lot of churches have really helped out fill those closets. We also keep a food closet for the children while they're there. And it has like macaroni and cheese, raviolis and stuff because those kids could be there for a while. To do this job, our advocates can't just advocate. They need to do education and prevention. In 2013, Harrison County Child Advocacy Center, as the name at the time, started a body safety program in all of Harrison County elementary schools for first grade. That program grew into prosecution of sex offenders to their children. Our largest percent of offenders are people they live with, love, or like. It is not people they don't know. Many kids did not know it wasn't okay to be sexually abused. And they were able to disclose and prosecution happened throughout that program. We continued that program even through COVID. We did a Facebook Live, so the teachers were able to use that in their daily education programs. And we were part of the team that worked with the state to form the Air Marine Law, where body safety has to be provided from kindergarten to 12th grade. We have continued the body safety program and we have expanded into Dodgerich County with the SHIELD program of partnering with them. And we also have expanded into Taylor County. We are hoping to expand in the Barber County for that education this year. This goes over our team members. So part of our team is, we are the strongest as our weakest link. So something we do with national accreditation is we provide trainings to all our team members. We provide national and statewide trainings. And we have started our own summer learning series for all our team members, especially for our law enforcement, which is free to them. And they also get continuing education. Our summer learning series has been a case study, three days at our center for law enforcement prosecutors, and it has been one of the best trainings in the state. These are our two trainings that are currently scheduled. We do have a Child Abuse Investigation 101 coming up on 17th of this month. And then our three-day training is actually going to be also a case study where two national trainers are coming, plus local trainers. And it is on a child death case. So I just wanted to give you a quick history. There are 21 centers in the state of West Virginia, accredited centers. And we have served over 4,000, almost 5,000 kids in the past year. Statistics have showed that a kid that survives abuse is well over $200,000 for all of the investigations for everything. If a child comes through the CAC, it saves $1,000 per child in funding. 65% of our referrals this current fiscal year that's not done have been from Harrison County. 20% of those have been from Clarksville, West Virginia. We have done over 500 interviews this fiscal year. And finally, the why is because 26 of the new children served at Heroes Haven have exposed to drug endangerment. We do not want that to continue. Only 13% statewide. We are doubling that here at Heroes Haven Child Advocacy Center. We see the issue and we want to prevent that in the future. It also reduces the trauma. It saves each investigation $1,000 per child. The interviews are now court-defendable and has increased prosecution to the point that Heroes Haven has achieved a conviction rate of 2.43 and the state is only .08. So that, we're proud of our law enforcement. We're proud of our prosecution. That is them that has created that. And we want to have our children become survivors. So we believe in our children. We believe in our team. I want to thank you from me and my staff for being able to present. And there is my information if you have any questions.
Yeah, Patty, I had a question. What is the biggest challenge you're facing right now with Child Advocacy Center? And I know we spoke before about, you know, Boca funding and stuff and how, you know, that's being cut and decimated, you know, at the federal level. Is that a big challenge? And what are the other challenges to sustain a good program like this?
So definitely financial, that's huge. Boca is being cut 70% across the board this October. I have six staff. With having over 500 interviews, I should have 10 staff. Boca pays for four of my staff fully. We are looking at, hopefully, the state government is helping out with that loss currently. We don't know if that's going to be a permanent or temporary thing. I am meeting with our state representatives in DC next week. A lot of our funding, some increases and some is cut. But a lot of it stays the same. But when we are receiving more referrals, which is a good thing for the children, like I never want to complain about sending, getting more referrals. But we should also have more staff. And when your funding stays the same, it's hard to increase staff. We also, Tammy Hamner is not going to be with us forever. So we also need to expand therapy services. Right now, it's a month wait to get in to see Tammy Hamner for our children, unless it's one that we call and say, "They have to see you right now." So we do want to expand that services to them. And we, not just Harrison County, but for all four of our counties. When you have one trauma-focused cognitive behavior therapist and you have over 500 kids come to your center per year, it's hard for them to receive all those services. And probably the vicarious trauma, that's a huge thing. Just like law enforcement CPS, my staff hears stories from children that no one can ever imagine and they hear it on a daily basis. And it does cause trauma, which causes turnover. I have been lucky to have staff that's been there for a long time. But still, it does affect them. And to be able to provide them with a relief is a challenge. Yep?
Are there any other questions for Ms. Summers? All right, well, thanks for your time this evening and the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular session meeting, May 15?
Madam Clerk, I mean, we approve the regular session minutes, May 15, 2025.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, and we have no petitions communicated to public hearings?
We do have one. Doris Dean, 6027 Bell Street, wishes to address counsel concerning the historic cemetery and its preservation of life.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Doris Dean. I am, excuse me, I'm representing the Daughters of the American Revolution, Daniel Davison Chapter. You may know that we have a cemetery, a historical cemetery, on West Main Street near the sheriff's office. And so a lot of time and effort go into that to keep it well-kept up and that sort of thing. The original presenter for tonight was delayed. I'm not sure if he'll be able to make it. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit. And on behalf of the DAR, the Daniel Davison Chapter, I want to thank the city for their ongoing upkeep of the beautiful American flag flower garden that every year is put out by your personnel. When I talked with these gentlemen last year, they said it'd been over 20 years that this is being done. And I know that when folks come up the West Pike Street, they love seeing that. And so that's a great thing that you folks have done. And also, too, you repaired it. They told me last year, some of the boards, they were rotting and everything. And they did not forget. They repaired that this year. And they made everything look very beautiful there. And you also pick up trash. I wasn't quite sure how to say that. Y'all pick up trash because you provide a trash receptacle there. Because people do come and go. They visit the historical cemetery. It is the cemetery where Daniel Davison was buried. And, you know, he was a founder of Clarksville and gave parcels of land to help start this city. And he was ultimately buried there, along with many others. And so on behalf of the DAR, the Daniel Davison Chapter, I want to thank you for your ongoing help and support that we so sorely need for Historical Cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we will have the city manager's report.
So I've handed out the report to all of council. Now that Summers is here, there's lots going on. So there's been restoration of slides. They have transitioned to full-time work at the City Park. Our splash park is now open, the Fall Water Slides. We had to delay a little because of the weather, but it's going to be open seven days a week, weather permitting. The amphitheater has a number of concerts that are going to be happening. And all positions have been filled in the splash zone and the mini golf. There was a collectible show that was held at the Clarksville City Park with almost 40 vendors and almost 500 attendees. There was a lot of positive feedback. And so another show is being planned for fall. Code has been busy as well. So we're still moving through our demo contracts. We're working with the state to make sure everything is in line. There's been sanitary board meetings and grant work, as well as attending various other meetings. There's been 81 building permits issued with a total job cost of just over $2.5 million. And lots of fees collected as well within the department. There's been several dog calls. And there's been some changes for our code officers around keeping daily logs. And all vacant and dead properties are being checked weekly. There's been a lot of ongoing inspections of the whole gas trading facility to make sure that's moving along. And there's been a few vehicles tagged in the city as well. The finance department has almost $600,000 of VNO taxes that came in and just over $21,000 of hotel taxes. If you run through, there's been quite a bit collected in different areas of the city. Finance also prepared the final budget revision through the general fund. They prepared a base salary and wage schedule, which includes a $1,200 cost of living adjustment per employee for next year. Instead of generally, it was done by a percentage. This year, the suggestion is a flat rate. The parking authority budgets were prepared. And there's been continuing meetings with various collection agencies from the West Virginia State Contract to prepare to turn over some of the city's debt to those agencies to help collect. The fire department responded to a total of 265 calls in May. A firefighter did depart to go to Morgantown Fire Department and was starting the process to hire his replacement. The fire department would also like to thank Dave Summers for installing the LED lights in the central base garage. So there's been a number of things happening, grants and community development. We're working on making sure we're in compliance with all of our grants and looking for new grants to apply for. We're hoping to hear back from our applications that council approved a couple months ago with the new congressional spending. We've met with several different organizations and businesses showing different properties that we have in town and working with the LRA, moving properties from the auction into the LRA landing. I sent out the list to council what's been moved so far. And in another two months, we'll send out another comprehensive list so council can see that. There's a lot of draws that have gone down on the grants for firefighters. There's also grants for the rail trail sidewalks we're currently working on. We're hoping to get out the RFP to design the sidewalks. We've been talking with Department of Highways on that as well. If you look at the bottom, where it says CBS lists grants for 2026 requests, we're looking for different areas to apply for those for outside of the congressional spending as well. The police department has responded to just over 2,000 calls for service in the month of May. I apologize, an advance patrol with Matthew Kosniak. Lohim Rogan and Xander Fitch graduated the West Virginia State Police Academy and reported to full duty. Backbones are continuing on new applicants to fill vacant positions. And motors are reminded to drive carefully due to road construction in the city and use alternate routes where possible. So Public Works has been very busy. We had some inclement weather over the last week. So they've been busy with trees falling and a lot of water in the roads to take care of. We've sold 110,000 pounds of processed compost and picked up just over 69,000 pounds of yard waste from residents to date last month. They've installed a number of stop signs and LED bulbs and done some beautification work in the city. All the flowers are up now in the city as well, which is great. The Robinson Ground Performing Arts Schedule for June is below. You can go to their website to get more information. And the wastewater treatment plant, so we're working on the upcoming budget for next year and working on the projects under various stages of planning and construction. They've also responded to 42 sewer calls and numerous missed utility calls. They're also repairing lines on various streets. And the SCADA program has been moved to the new computer. We've had a couple of failures on pumps and they've been sent out for repairs. And annual tank inspections are about to begin. And we are currently looking to hire a new operator at the plant. And as always, a reminder to the public, please not flush baby wipes or flushable wipes down the drains. They do not dissolve and can cause blockages in the sewer line as well as damage to the pipes.
Thank you, Ms. Summer. And we have the city clerk's.
So we formed a connection with an application operator, private club, private wine restaurant, or tavern installed by Midtown Lounge Inc., doing business as Midtown Lounge Inc. at 159 West Pike Street. And returned the after on May 30. And also, an official application was filed by the same entity as Midtown Lounge 2 at the same location and returned at the same time. Done on finish business.
We have a motion for a consideration of the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Clarksville to rezone and reclassify certain properties between Coleman Avenue and Baltimore Avenue from an A-R4 classification to an I-1 classification.
So moved.
Sir.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a consideration of a first reading of an ordinance establishing salaries or compensation for municipal officers, employees for fiscal year 2025, 2026, repealing all inconsistent ordinances.
We pulled the motion second. The mayor did call me and asked that he would like to, but council, he supports this, including the cost of living adjustment for staff. I wanted to let the public and council know because he wasn't able to be here today.
Madam Clerk, I mean, we approve an ordinance establishing salaries and compensation for municipal officers and employees for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and repealing all inconsistent orders.
No second to that.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a consideration of a letter of support for the CBS off-system. Or a consideration of a resolution to approve revision to the city budget for fiscal year 2025, 2024, 2025.
So moved.
Sir.
Discussion on this. Just to clarify, is this the email that was sent out this morning by our finance director to revision with the $10,000, I guess, for the salt? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
I've had several questions for clarification. Just under the 2% utility tax from the natural gas. the natural gas, so the proposed revision we're now is the number three. Is that correct? So our revenue went up another $135,000 from that one?
Yes, actual revenue.
Then the cell phone, though, that they're paying on that tax, it decreased by $15,000. Okay, you have a reason why or anything, you think? Because cellphone use is definitely up.
It's true.
I'll try to check with the different companies. I'm not sure.
Also, down on the cable TV franchise fee, that's a pretty large decrease, $100,000. So, I mean, is this something we're seeing now going forward, you think?
Yes, this was happened last year. And I remember Will talking about last year. Thinking that we shouldn't have put it that high, but it was about the same last year. So I think it's going to, it's trending that way.
Well, I recommend going into 25, 27. Well, I recommend going into twenty-five, twenty-six budget that we go ahead and, when that comes back to us for the revision, for the first revision, that we reduce that amount by equal to this. Because obviously, we're not going to meet it next year, so we might as well be preparing for it. In the next page, on the fire service fee, protection fee, I had a question because the approved amount for this budget that we approved twenty-four, twenty-five last year was one point six million dollars. Then, there was proposed fire free increase in December of twenty-four, which went into effect January one of 2025. So to date, we've had six months, but yet, the revision still shows one point six million dollars. So are we not collecting more now on an increase?
We are. We're collecting quarterly now instead of bimonthly. So we're just a little bit behind in that regard, but I'm not sure. I can run some reports according.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I mean, if council so wishes to move forward with that, and we won't pay for a fire transfer that loses money, so I just hope that money is there. And then contributions from other entities. There was nothing in there for twenty-five thousand, but now there is. And you may not know what that is off the top of your head, but what that twenty-five thousand is for?
I apologize. I looked at that. I meant to get that for you, but I do not recall. So I'm just...
And then on the interest on deposits, it's way down.
Yeah, there's been some, like, banking services in the bank of July.
That is a variable rate that we have now as a fix. Is it just less cash in the bank to make it go to the outlet? From all the buttons?
It's a lower rate than it was. But we're not really under a contract. We're just going through the year.
Well, I guess this is a two-part question. The West Virginia State Audit of the P Card, my favorite subject. So we received eight thousand dollars in there, and then, the next page, it's reduced eight thousand.
That was something that the state audit could possibly miss to change the line, I remember. That's why that was the...
So did we make any money from the P Card?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make sure. All right, so this goes back to a question I think I had is back to March of twenty-four. So, under the response and rescue fees for the Fire Department, is that the same that we passed in March of twenty-four for the non-emergency medical transport?
Yes.
So...
We have a third party ledger. So we bring in the revenue, and then we pay them.
Okay, and then that amount, originally seventy thousand, great to see it's up seventy-three thousand. So it's a positive, but that money is being dedicated a hundred percent towards the Fire Department. I think my request was good in escrow.
A separate account.
So it is there, okay. And then, again, going from following next fiscal year, if we could probably reduce the city demolition revenue, seems like we're way off on that one, a hundred and forty thousand.
Where collections were down, that's what we're looking for. The collection agency for this one.
Okay, yeah. I highly recommend a reduced there. And then the total unencumbered balance, it's up. Well, up from the original balance. But are we confident on the four fifteen?
That's what it was last year, going into July last year. I think we have, I don't have the budget for next year with me, but I think they'll add two hundred thousand.
It was three fifty one last year?
Yeah, that was, well, that was originally what it was. And then, in the first revision in July, we moved it up because we had to work.
Okay. Let's go more portions. All right. The Y M C As. So that one, the thirty thousand difference, so the thirty-one thousand dollar increase approximately, is this debt now paid off or is that transferred back?
Yeah.
And then the contribution to the rainy day, two hundred thousand, it's been two hundred thousand. Is there any chance of an increase in that to increase that to a stabilization plan?
We will try next year.
Whatever carry amount might be. Under the Fire Department, salary and wages. Maybe this is typo, or maybe I'm not following what happened here. But the approved budget was two point seven. Then it reduced to one point seven. So we're down almost a million dollars.
The Fire Department, and the net increase, five ninety-eight.
I'm just talking about salary and wages, just that line.
Oh, okay.
So I'll make sure to get paid.
And there was, there were just a lot of issues. With that one, it's like it wasn't...
Is it a calculation issue?
I believe it was with the Fire Department. No one else's was off like that. So I didn't look for individual items to see what exactly was wrong, but I can.
Well, just check that, because then I guess the follow-up question to that would be under the Social Security Medicare Tax, that increased twenty thousand. Too wide would if the salaries would decrease almost a million.
Right.
So just if you could verify those two numbers. Unless that other million went down to the overtime shifts down there where it shows an increase, where it was never there before. Maybe that's how you calculate the hours, I don't know.
It is, now the hour you're done. That's why the million is down there at overtime.
Okay. All right, then Social Security. And then the, this might have been your question you had about the email. I didn't see it, but the salt and senders. So do we meet the contractual limit for salt purchases this year? Sorry.
Do you have any other questions? All right, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Consideration of a letter of support for the C D S off-system bridges project involving multiple bridges in the city of Clarksburg. Mr. Speaker.
So this is a request from Department of Highways. There is one bridge for sure, not two. They're putting in for C D S requests. They're asking for a letter of support according to the resolution we had. I need time to answer. Please let me drop that letter.
I move we write a letter of support for the C D S off-system bridges project.
Sir.
I'll just put a caveat in. I'd like to see a copy of the letters that were approved for the letter of support. But I'll put a yes on this.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of a petition filed by Varner and Van Vulcanberg P L L C on behalf of their client, V N S Land L L C, requesting the rezoning of property located on Stony Brook Road from its R one designation to a B two designation.
Madam Clerk, I move to send this resounding to us, Varner and Van Vulcanberg, the planning zoning. Can we give them consideration?
Seconded that.
We have the motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the sanitary board.
Madam Clerk, I move we appoint Mr. Joshua Childers to the sanitary board.
Sir. We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consideration of appointment to the central board.
Madam Clerk, I move we appoint Bill Ofield to the central board.
Seconded. We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, do we need two? Just one?
Consideration of the rescheduling, canceling of the June nineteenth council meeting due to the Juneeenth holiday.
So last council meeting, we talked about moving council meeting to the week after, to that, the next Thursday.
So there would be another meeting on June twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
I move that we reschedule the June nineteenth regular session of city council to Thursday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Sir. We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
And our favorite part, council comments. Okay, Mr. Deans?
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Thank you to Heroes even coming to present to council tonight. They do really important work, as we all know. Like, first of all, these kids deserve justice. You know, if they've been abused, then the people who've done heinous things deserve punishment. But also, receiving that support early on can help reduce or help them handle the trauma that comes later in life and, you know, sometimes causes people to turn to drug use and things like that. And so, you know, I really commend them for all of their work that they're doing. Mr. Ofield, thank you for coming to represent Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. I think it's something that hits home to a lot of people. And, you know, I'm glad that we're recognizing it and encourage everyone to do what they can to protect their brain health and keep the quality of their life up. And I'm esteemed with the D A R. It's good to know that Public Works is being so helpful, and it really is a good thing for the city. It's very eye-catching coming up Pike Street. I'd also like to thank everyone who organized the walkthrough of W I this past weekend. Think that was really important for our city. Today's kind of a bittersweet day because we had, you know, several city schools that are now officially closed. I'd like to thank the city manager and Dr. Nicholson for starting the process to collaborate with the B O E to come up with a redevelopment plan. You know, we can't do anything to change in what has happened in the past. I think we have had a history of being reactive, not proactive. And I think this, going forward with this, trying to work with a redevelopment plan is being proactive. And so, thank you for helping this process through, and I look forward to working with the Board of Education. Also, thank you to Public Works for helping with the library last week when they had that massive leak. Thank you to the mayor and Councilmember Howe who brought that to everybody's attention. And, yeah, for Friday tomorrow, and have a good weekend.
Mr. Howe?
Thank you. Tiffany, the paving list for this coming year. And then, last year for the levy, for the paving, what was, did we pave last year?
So we had that, we switched it. We, is Jason?
Fair Contracting paved last fall for that fiscal year.
I have that list, that list of streets actually that I put on my desk today as well.
Council approved the contract, I believe, last July or August.
And then this year, when were you out the bid?
We're working on trying to find roads to pave that aren't going to be torn up on the waterboard or the gas. I had mentioned to council a couple months ago, it's proving a bit challenging. If we don't spend our full amount, it'll be escrow for the year after. But I believe we have to be very fiscally responsible. If the waterboard's planning to come in the year after, we paved a tear up, that's just not a great use of taxpayer dollars, having taxpayers pay twice for something. So we're just trying to be very careful that we're finding the appropriate roads to pave. We have a seventeen-year paving plan, so we're looking at roads to be done in eight, nine year, eight, nine, or ten run here. Seven of the sixteen-year paving plan to see if we can identify roads that can be paved. We, there's a couple we can do for sure that I know about. And we're doing a lot of patching this year as well to make sure that the roads are kept in the best condition we have while we have all this construction going on.
I might recommend that maybe get with Jason from the waterboard. I was wondering if there's a way we can leverage the paving money we have on top of what they're doing and to get their project to get further and to get more roads paved in a timely manner. I'd recommend maybe a request that maybe you meet Jason from the waterboard to see if you can come up with some kind of agreement to do that, to assist. And then, can we, Tiffany, where we, can we do any budget revisions at all or tweak the numbers for the Cole Severn, Trinity Day, Rob's Grand, police escrow levy, any of those?
No.
This is just, I'll tell you how it's in general file.
Yeah.
Well, I'll follow up on Ryan Deans, Mr. Thompson Deans' comment about the school board. Yeah, I'm happy the city went in a prostrum to get a plan together, hopefully for these schools that were vacated because it's proven that there are no plans for schools when we vacate them. Central Junior High demolition cost the city over three hundred thousand dollars. Towers, Broadway catches on fire. What that costs, and I thank God that no one's heard of that fire. That was a delicious fire. And, you know, they sold it in taxes, and the property owners just let it go derelict and, you know, put people's lives at risk. Property damaged, property risk around it. Altavesta, Pierpont, to name a few. So, you know, I think it's evident that school board isn't the most productive when it comes to rig use of property. So in the paper, I was a little dismayed by a comment from the Wednesday, May twenty-first paper. And I'll read the quote, in this case, everybody didn't get the paper. "I just can't see what we as a board and representing the community would want to give Hightfield away." Hug also said, "The city needs more than restaurants. It needs venues to attract people, such as movie theaters." Just to point out, Mr. Hug must not have been downtown in the last several years. We're quite large entertainment center that the mayor of Bridgeport actually donated his own money to. And so, I hope Mr. Hug leaves his office once in a while, leaves his home not before, comes over to Clarksburg and realizes that things are going on. I do remember the days, back in favor. I do remember the days of Clarksburg with all the local stores, the movie theaters, and different things. And then, Clarksburg was slowly allowed to die off in charity. And it's now, as far as I can see, I think we're almost to a point where I don't know whether this town can ever be revitalized to what it should be or what it was. Well, so that comment kind of hit home to me a little bit because when you look at the school board and the past history of the schools, they were one of the major contributors to the downfall of Clarksburg over the last forty years. So we can sit there, we can play games with words, we can make comments about staff who shows up to a meeting attempting to do the right thing. we can make comments about staff who shows up to a meeting and attempted to do the right thing. So I would recommend we put those personalities aside and do what's right for not only Clarksville, but to surrounding communities, and we're few as another one's going to get hit with it. You know, Stanley's been hit with it in the past, working grade school. So when these schools are gone, and I get the economy and the economics about it, about schools, bus and everything else, but when these schools are let go and are left in the communities to rot and deteriorate, how does he think that the city was deteriorating? The school board is the, one of the biggest economic drivers in the community. And yet, we sit here every day and try to fulfill gaps, and those are large gaps that's very difficult to fulfill. So I would highly encourage Mr. Hug at the school board to probably take a harder look, more knowledgeable look, and look to see what they've done in the past, and let's see what we can do going forward in the present. So I really think we need to look at Hightfield as an economic driver for the city, but I think we do need a plan, we need to show what money we're willing to invest in that uh project down there and have the park board on board, but make sure the funding is placed for the park board to be able to take that over. So I, I just hope that the school board can not continue to play games like this as we continually to close schools, move to school districts and things like that, because those have direct impacts to the city, and they always will, and they always have. So I just hope they open their eyes and truly see what they're going to, they're in the city and they're in the communities where their home losses are, so just want to get that out there for the community itself. On a larger note, you can also be entertained if you want to come back to Clarksville, we meet the free, great concert this uh Saturday at the amphitheater at six P M. Eight's reason, so, you know, I think uh it's another great service we're offering and entertainment, so if the public gets that support, that's fair. And thank you for the library, everything else is going down, thank you, appreciate it. I'll have to speak to them now. That's it.
Counselor outside, really good. Mr. Deans?
I, I, I'm, I just want to thank city manager, for the, the city manager reports, it's, it's good to read through these and um I'll just try to make the point to, you know, pick out a department, usually it's the police, fire, and health that works, but uh, I want to pick up, um, want to point out code enforcement at this time, um, looks like we collected about thirteen thousand one hundred sixty six dollars in fees. And although it's unpopular, um, four hundred and thirty nine notices violations, but to me, that, that shows that there's a lot of work being done by you folks, um, it shows that, you know, um, we really care about, you know, inspecting houses. There's, it looks like a presidential construction inspection's a hundred and five this month. If you look at all these numbers, and you look at how many code enforcement officers we have, that, that's a lot of work, so appreciate everything you're doing over here, Jason, appreciate that. And of course, I will applaud Public Works, I mean, we have nothing short of a ratio of going through Clarksville and um and have quite about three issues of rain in two days and um you know, and dis overwhelming stormwater systems and different things, you can't, can't help that, but the response, I think, was really good in uh Public Works and not only trying to navigate, you know, um, probably the largest infrastructure project in our city's history, water project, um, but trying to navigate natural disasters, sewer complaints, um, if you name it, that's, you know, that's why Public Works, that's why we have the one best public work systems in the state here. And that's why they always dominate probably about three pages of the city manager's report, so I thank them for that too. Uh, fire department over two hundred and sixty five calls from the service in May. Um, you know, two hundred and sixty five calls, you buy that by thirty, you know, you, you get those numbers, there's not only, you know, calls for fires, but there are accidents, overdoses, uh, just a number of dynamic situations that our fire department has to deal with. Uh, from, you know, from fighting fires to the periodic side of things too. And, and of course, our police department over, you know, two thousand calls in the month of May, that'll probably go up a little bit, you know, with the, you know, summertime. And in all, you know, in all these systems, you know, all of our departments still have to navigate through one of our largest infrastructure projects in our city's history. And I'm just, you know, I'm just really appreciative of the patience and the diligence and, you know, and and just going out there every day, you know, continuing to do what you do, you know, and, and I see it in this report. Um, the other thing I want to point out too is, is that we are having a, we're all starting our community barbecues up. At the Tuesday, two at five to seven at Monticello apartment. And um, and the community barbecues, they're open to everybody in the city. Doesn't matter if it's in Monticello or Northview, everybody in the city's, you know, invited to that. And it's just a good way not only to, you know, come together, meet your neighbor, get to know your neighbor, have a hot dog and a hamburger, but it's also a good opportunity to, to meet with city staff at different departments, you know, our code enforcement that's out here, you know, doing their best to secure, you know, our maintenance structures and stuff and you know, make sure that, you know, property owners have a quality life, and then our, our police department, you know, um, I remember last year in Northview, um, there, there were a couple cars parked in the alley in Northview that shouldn't have been parked there, you know, and our police chief responded to that immediately when someone called him at the, at the community barbecue, where they were and uh, and what the situation was. And so it's, it's a great way, you know, we always say, if you got a problem, see something, say something, call us, call nine one one, whatever. Um, we still want you to do that, especially if it's an emergency, but this is an opportunity for us to bring government to you. You know, in a nice, uh, in a nice, friendly, friendly atmosphere, you know, over a hot dog. So, um, that's, you know, I'm really looking forward to those, you know, throughout the summer and um and I also want to give a, you know, a shout out to Patty Saunders, you know, with the Harrison County Child Advocacy Center, Heroes Haven, um, that, that is hard work. And, and they have, you know, they lost, I mean, they cut Coke about about seventy percent, that's really decimating, you know, to, to an organization when you lose that much funding, you know, and um, it's just, you, you think about, you know, twenty six percent of the, of the kids that come through there are drug related, you know, come from drug related situations, um, and as, you know, and as the drugs change and we have to deal with uh fighting on the supply side and on the demand side, you know, um, there's just going to be more kids that are being abused and neglected, you know, and more of the need for uh, you know, for supporting organizations like the Child Advocacy Centers. And uh, you know, that's, I'm glad that she came here and educated and enlightened us on a very uncomfortable subject. Other than that, you know, we have first Friday this weekend, Clarksville Lions and Cubs, and I'm Kate Walk at five o'clock to support their programs and disaster relief, you know, throughout the community, throughout the state. Um, that's going to be at Jackson Square at five, on the corner, they serve all around town too, and I and I just want to say even through our challenges that we face, you know, in our city, um, I think we still, we have a lot to be proud of too, and I think it's just, you know, folks, you know, folks here in Clarksville, you know, including myself, I mean, this is home, you know, this, this means something. And um, you see it in the city manager's report, you see it up there amongst the council, you see it out in the community, you see it with Bill Field, you know, um, years and years, not only, you know, advocating for seniors, the senior center, you know, um, providing mental quality and life and socialization in the, you know, at the senior center, but, you know, through advocating for Alzheimer's, you know, on, um, intervention, you know, which, you know, when that hits you, you know, when they hit someone that you love and they no longer know who you are, it becomes a very lonely moment, and so having that sort of support from you, you know, through the organization is going to help a lot of family members, so, and a lot of people who are struggling with this, so, so just remember that, you know, going forward.
I'll just say thanks. Uh, Mr. Hal?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, I'd like to thank our speakers who came out tonight, it was a very touching presentation, Heroes Haven. Um, I'd like to thank the city staff and city manager for flurry requests and issues that we had over the month of May. And acting on them so quickly, uh, I do have, uh, I guess, a request to maybe talk to the water board and all the entities involved, construction, western avenue, I did receive a lot of complaints, obviously there's a lot of issues on social media, but um, sit down and maybe work something out. Ironically, today, coming up from work, there was no construction at all, I don't know if they're done or what, but it's been a nightmare for the last several days. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, anything we can do to, to make it easier for the residents in Northview to, you know, get down western avenue, it was a nightmare, so. Other than that, first Friday, this Friday, we'll see you all there.
Thank you, everyone, uh, I would just like to say, um, welcome to our new officers, uh, that just came on board with us, you know, uh, hopefully they'll be with us for all time. Nice to come from here with the city, uh, thank you to Ms. Saunders, Ms. Deans, and Mr. O'Field. Uh, I would like to just remind everybody of first Friday, and also the barbecue on, uh, June tenth on the Monticello playground. Uh, I would like to give a big thank you to uh our staff, um, Public Works, our fire department, our police department, and code, because, you know, over the course of the spring so far, we've had some torrential storms out there. And our city departments have been out there, they've been right on point with this, I mean, you know, the water backing up, I've seen water bubbles out here in the black little lakes on the street, you know, we basically, we're handling these situations, you know, we're getting on through it. You know, this is uh, you know, we're going through a painful process right now with growth in our city. And uh, once we get to the other side, you know, that's when we'll get to see, and we'll get to really enjoy it, but uh, you know, I would just like to thank, you know, everyone for all the hard work that they're putting in, work that goes on behind the scenes that people don't get to see, that we don't often see, but, you know, it's happening, and eventually it'll come to fruition, and we'll get to see the results of this hard work. But uh, you know, thank you all, and as the mayor always says, if you see something, say something, and we have a motion to adjourn, so we'll.